Phones are off or on silent. And council members, ensure your microphones are turned on. All right, today is February 10th, 2025. It's a regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council this evening. Before we begin our regular legislative meeting, we do have individual committee meetings. And we will start with city properties, parks, and recreation. With Mr. East... I'm sorry. Yeah, with Mr. Easterling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today's date, February 10th, 2025, at 6:03 PM in council chambers. All members are present. And visitors, as noted, we have one piece of requested legislation. That's a letter from Mike Tiedeki, our city engineer, requesting legislation entering the contract with a contract for the demolition of a city-owned building located at 107 Fifth Street, formerly Masonic Temple. Emergency wording is requested. I'll open that up. If anyone's got any remarks they'd like to make. I have the letter, which says introduce legislation entering the contract with a contract for the demolition of the city-owned building at 107 Fifth Street. I also ask the emergency clause be added to the legislation in the order to commence with the contract to begin this as soon as possible. If you have any I know, just from some of this, we're waiting on approval, correct, from a grant to be used for this, that it's kind of non-traditional how we, you know, requesting what the money's being used for. So we don't have that approval yet, if I'm correct?
So first off, we open bids tomorrow. So that's why I don't know the contractor, and I don't have the cost yet, which I can provide. The project is funded through city means. However, we still have the opportunity to use state money for a portion of the demolition. The state Historic Preservation Office has a waiver that they need to sign to allow us to use that funding. So we're appealing their decision not to sign the waiver with some new information that we'll have down to them this week. So if they sign the waiver, we're allowed to use that money. If they don't, we, you know, we're still demolishing the building. It's just, we'd like to use that state money. So that's where we're at with the... We still hope to use the state money, but we don't have that decision yet for a couple weeks.
Anybody have any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Chair. Did I see in the email that it has to be used by a certain time?
So should we be allowed to use the state funding for the demolition, the building has to be down by the first of May?
And how long is it estimated it would take to bring down?
Well, our contract documents have a required completion date of, in April. So we can meet that. But the contractor's anticipating being able to, you know, be awarded the contract and get started in March in order to meet that. So it shouldn't take long. I just want to make sure that we keep our process moving so that they have a big enough window to take the building down.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple things. Traditionally, before legislation entering into a contract comes before us, we have a contract in hand. I've always been one to take issue with not having the paperwork before we go forward. I do want to note that this is in committee, so there's time to address it on the back end. But with that said, are there... What's the cost expected that we're expected to see for the demo?
I don't have the engineer's estimate memorized on what we put in the bids, but it's $250,000-ish, dollars, $240,000-ish, something like that, is what we anticipate.
And is that contract a cap at 250, or is it... Can it go over?
Again, we'll find out tomorrow when we open bid, what the true cost of what this demolition will be. And I can share that, you know, as early as tomorrow, what those numbers are.
And how long are... Is the city going out... How long the bid's going to be out for before we know?
The bids have been being advertised for several weeks, three weeks now.
You can't open them until...
Correct. So you have a timeframe you have to advertise, and a bidding requirement that ends tomorrow. So we're opening at 10 o'clock tomorrow, the bids that we've been advertising for several weeks now. The bid opening is tomorrow officially for this project.
So we're expecting $250,000, but we don't know if it's going to go over. And we will know a bid if somebody gets accepted, or we'll know the bids tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. I'll leave it up to the committee for if you guys want to bring it out. I did... Do you want to note that you'll be bringing out something that does... To enter into a contract when there's no contract. So just want to keep that in mind. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you said it with your closing remark is, we don't have anything. I'm sorry.
So one more thing. Typically, we don't have a contract until we get the ordinance, and it goes through Board of Control, is when we would have a contract for this work. What we have now is, is we're opening the bids tomorrow, which is what we'll know who the contractor is and the amount anticipated that we will write the contract for. So...
Yes, Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Chair. Just for the legislative procedure, and I'm not on the committee, but if it were to be called out, it wouldn't be called until next week, a committee of the whole. So it would be two weeks before the first reading. With emergency language, we could hold it for a second, first reading, a second reading, even to a third reading. If we don't like the contract, once we see it, it can always... The legislation can always be pulled. But if it was called tonight, we would have, what, six, six weeks?
For the first reading?
Before a third reading, to pull it if we don't like it.
Yeah, you'd have some time. So I... To Councilman Heidig's point, that's why I said I'd leave it up to committee. But I'd keep a close eye on it.
I personally think, in my opinion, since it doesn't, doesn't stop the ball rolling, if we don't do anything without the paperwork in front of us, if what I'm hearing is correct, then there's no file. And I'm not, you know, we're not holding anything up. We're just, we know what we're voting on, if we, if we have the stuff in front of us. So I personally feel, my opinion, that if we can wait a week, then we just wait a week. I think we'll get the answers we need. We'll have known better contract amount. So we know what we're physically agreeing to versus today, and all the research, it's an open checkbook, it's an open, it's everything at this moment, because we're, we don't have to fill in the blanks. So I personally would prefer just to leave it sit. Do we have any answers?
Can I make a suggestion, Chair? You wouldn't be waiting a week. It would be two at least, and then another week following before you. The committee would be able to entertain this. However, if you would like, I don't think... The point Mr. Heidig was making is, if it doesn't, if it comes out tonight, there's still a whole long that we can amend it on the back end. We can cancel it at any time. Your committee can cancel it, right, at any time. But what we can do, if you're not comfortable bringing it out tonight, we can have a special, since the next legislative is not until two, two weeks from now anyways. We can hold a special pending the bids are in next week. Typically, you wouldn't meet next week. Your committee wouldn't meet next week on Tuesday. But we can have a special to entertain just this piece of legislation.
Then I'm fine with that.
And it wouldn't change the way it comes to council.
I want the numbers in front of the people voting, so they feel good about what they voted.
Okay. So a special next week?
Correct.
We'll hold it. Okay.
If however I gotta say it, or someone's got a...
Nope. Don't have to say anything. Just, we just need to know what needs to happen. Awesome. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, for filling in the blanks there. We have no pending legislation at this time. And if anyone has any miscellaneous discussions or comments, I open it up to... Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to note, as a lot of you know, we did put out a sled chair bin at Waltz Park. It is still there. I know we are expecting some snow, I believe, Wednesday morning. So they are still there, but once the snow's gone, that's really the first sign of spring. So they're still there, but we are expecting some more snow. So they'll be there till the snow's gone. That's all.
Any other guests, Ms. Gerhart?
Just a reminder that Thursday at 5:00 is the Parks and Rec meeting for you and I to go to.
Yes, I plan on being there.
Okay. I will plan on seeing you there, then.
Anybody else? Any... With that, I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Ms. Gerhart, give me a second.
One second.
With that, we adjourn at 6:15.
Thank you, Mr. Easterling. Next up is Public Welfare and Safety with Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time, I'd like to bring the Public Welfare and Safety Committee to order. Today's date's February 10th, 2025. It is 6:14 PM, located in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, excuse me. Co-chair, Mr. Easterling, Ms. Gerhart, Mr. Greer. All other council members are present with the exception of Ms. Beck. All guests are noted on my sheet. We have no request for new legislation. We have our pending legislation that we'll be voting on tonight, ordinance number 20-2025, which is the amending ordinance number 69-2024, entering the contract Vasu Communications, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 69-2024, entering the contract Vasu Communication, Inc., to reflect the new total amount of $508,932.25 for the purchase of a new radio system, declaring emergency. That's just an increase of $3,000. And I have nothing else. Do I have any, anything from my committee?
Anything from the gallery?
I have a couple questions. Mr. Shree, the intersection of Snyder and Van Buren with the traffic cones, traffic lights, I've heard a lot of different comments about that, safety-wise. Can you kind of just bring us up the snuff on that?
So we're still, that's part of the project, the South Van Buren project. We're still waiting on the materials. The poles were, last I had heard, were being finished. When they're shipped, they'll be installed. In the meantime, we have a controller wire go down. So to make the intersection safe, we delineated it to a single lane of traffic traveling in all directions, and placed temporary stop signs.
Four-way stop.
It's a four-way stop.
Okay.
Yes, to create a safer intersection.
Right.
And wait for the poles, rather than pulling new wire, putting a new controller for a project that'll be completed ASAP, as soon as we have poles in hand.
Do we know how long the poles are going to take to get to us?
We don't have a definite deadline. It's, last we knew, they were in powder coating, I believe. So they, as soon as they shoot, we're going to get them installed, so.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Chair. On those poles, will they come with those loops installed on them, so I can get off Director Eisner's back?
With the loop, with what?
The cameras?
The cameras.
Oh, so yes, yeah. So that, there will be cameras. That'll be a camera-controlled intersection.
And that'll be with the poles when they come?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We're adjourned at 18:18 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Next up is Rules, Marketing, and Development. Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to bring the Rules, Marketing, and Development Committee to order. The date is Monday, February 10th, 2025. It is still 18:18 hours, and we are in council chambers. All members of my pres... Committee are not here. I am missing my co-chair, Mrs. Beck, but Mr. Heidig and President Greer are here, and all other council members, as noted on my sheet. We have no new requests for legislation at this time. Our pending, which I believe we will be voting on this evening, is 18-2025. And this is the yearly updates with the codified ordinances and editing, taking things out, putting things in. It's a yearly update. Do we have any questions on this? Next, our third and final reading of ordinance 2-2025. This is presented by myself and Mrs. Thompson, entering into contract, Hoben Staub Architects, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated, enter into contract with Hasenstopp Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barberton, and the cost is not to exceed $104,200 in declaring an emergency. I know we had lots of conversation about this last week, but I'm pretty sure we're going to be talking about this again in finance, Mrs. Thompson. So we'll just wait and have one conversation about it. I'm not making any appointments at this time, and Mrs. Beck asked to be present whenever we talked about rules again, the updating of it and such, so I'm not going to bring that up tonight. So is there any miscellaneous conversation? Yes, Mr. Greer?
Where are the rules at?
In my drawer.
Progress-wise, what are we expecting, projecting?
Well, we're still, I thought we were still talking as in the committee about the things that we'd like to adjust and add. We were only about halfway through that conversation. And then we had Mrs. Amato come in the last week, so...
All right. Any projection? Three months, six months, anything?
Oh, this is going to be like the website and the... Yeah.
It's okay.
End of year.
Got to keep you under...
I would rather, I would rather over-deliver.
All right.
And shock you in July than, yeah, so, end of year.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Was there any miscellaneous discussion from the gallery? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll second Mr. Heidig's motion to adjourn, and we're adjourned at 6:21 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up, the City Utilities with Mr. Griffin.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call this meeting to order today, February 10th. We're in council chambers. Myself as chair, Emily Beck is absent, Jennifer Hager and Justin Greer are present. Tonight, we have no new request for legislation, and we do not have any pending legislation. Do we have any discussion from the council, the gallery? Yes, Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Chair. Directors, the sewer collapse on Sixth and Holmes, has that been fully addressed in the sanitary sewer that I had mentioned?
Yes. So it's repaired, it's been backfilled, and sewer is fully functional.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Hager?
Thank you. And what about the sinkhole near the fire hydrant on Alcorn and Taylor Road?
I've not been made aware of that. I can find out.
I called it in on Friday, so I just, and I may drive by today.
I do know that they have a fire hydrant in the Far West that was leaking, and actually the, it came off of the barrel detached from the lower portion, whether it's freefall or a break. It was turned off at the launch valve. I don't know if that's the same area, or if that's a different incident.
Yeah, it's very clear that it has created a sinkhole right by the fire hydrant. It's not in the street, but it's obviously concerning, you know, in the same area. I do worry about the road right there, in case it were to expand. I did report that on Friday, and they said they were going to call utilities because it wasn't in the road. So hopefully somebody got the message.
Is there a cone or anything? They caution paid?
Mr. Harris, did you see?
Yeah, I looked at it. Looks like it was, it washed underneath the road, and maybe the road sank, but there's no cone there.
Okay.
But you can tell that they cut out the area around the fire hydrant and replaced the fire hydrant. And I didn't see a cone there.
Okay, so that is probably, probably the same incident, I was...
Yeah, I would imagine.
Okay. All right. I will follow up with him.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Any more discussion for utilities? With that, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. We are adjourned at 6:25. Let that pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Last but not least, Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, February 10th, 2025, 6:24 PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heidig, Mr. Griffin, President Greer. All other council members are also present with the exception of Mrs. Beck, who is absent. All other guests are noted on my sheet. For requested legislation, we save that for a committee of the whole evenings. We do have a presentation of the finance report for the month of January 2025. Mr. Flaker, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you. Starting off with the Health Insurance Fund, and for the month of January 2025, the revenues were just over $433,000. Expenditures, $512,000 makes us a net year-to-date as a negative $79,000. Moving on to the Income Tax Fund, our estimate for the month of January was $1,160,000. Our actuals came in at just over $1,200,000. Put us over our estimate by about $42,000. We didn't do any transfers in January, but I'll do the temporary, in the temporary budget that council passed before the holidays. It did include a small transfer. I'm pretty sure it was 25% of what we transferred last year from income tax to the general fund. So we'll be starting to, we'll work on that transfer this month. So you'll start seeing transfers showing up on this sheet, starting next time. Looking at the statement of cash receipts and disbursements, normal funds in the negative that we've talked about for quite some time now, the City Grant Fund, that is the sludge to watering building, the FEMA Fund, which is the dam grant, and the flood mitigation grant for Arthur 14th and 15th, and then the CDVG fund, which is our HUD grant that we receive. All of those, we have to pay the expenditure before we can get reimbursed. So when we do, do pay the expenditures, the department heads will file with the grant agency to draw down those funds. The only other fund in the negative is the Health Insurance Fund. That is only in the negative due to the encumbrance outstanding, so at the beginning of the so beginning of the year, have to open up at least a three-month PO to pay for our healthcare through Summit County Health. So it's just in the negative due to that. We'll have the chargebacks every month to the departments to help fund that account, and that encumbrance outstanding will continue to decrease every month as we pay the Summit County Health bill. Looking at the three months, past three months of activity, general fund did go down, a lot of that just has to deal with no transfer in the month of January. That's the biggest reason. Special revenue funds, they did go up, once again, due to no transfer in the month of January. Enterprise funds did decrease. You'll just notice that the receipts were down. If you look from December to January, the receipts in the enterprise funds were down by about one point four million, so that was the big killer there, that drove that decrease. And all other funds, it did decrease, but like I said previously, we opened up that three-month PO for healthcare, so that is what's drawing down the unencumbered cash balances there. Looking at January of twenty-four to January of twenty-five, the general fund is up, if you look at it from that aspect, the general fund is up by about four hundred and fifty thousand at the same time as last year. Special revenue funds are down by about one point seven million. A lot of that, we start using up the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds were sitting in the special revenue funds, so we had the Vamberen Project started, and then the Worcester Road West Water Line. So those couple things drew down that. Enterprise funds is down by about one point eight million, just shy of one point eight million. Almost a million of that is just encumbrances outstanding. Then, moving on to all other funds, all other funds are down by about six hundred and seventy, well, six hundred and eighty thousand from last year. But you have to make note that we did have two healthcare holidays, which whenever we do those, that's about a three hundred thousand dollar hit to the health insurance fund. So it's right in line with the two healthcare holidays that we had last year. Are there any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Since there are no questions, we move on to pending legislation. First being ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-five. This would authorize the law director to enter into a one-year contract with the Legal Defender's Office of Summit County to provide legal representation to indigenous persons in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars per case and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks for that one? Next up, we've got ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-five. This would authorize payment to Everbridge Inc. in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents for payment for the annual NICSIL contract and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks? Next up, we have the appointments for, well, no, we've, this is a little bit out of order here. For the third reading this evening would be ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five, which Ms. Gerhart had mentioned earlier. This is for the contract with Hosenstopp Architects. I want to open this up for a discussion, we do have a few options. The first being, we could hold this at the second reading, not have the third reading, not vote on it yet, until the decision has been made with the foundation, or we can amend it to add wording, to maybe add, following an agreement with the foundation regarding the funding of the total project. So I would appreciate your thoughts. Yes?
I like either, I like the second one, because it would allow for them to already have all the approval here, and then as soon as that's signed, they could go right into ordering the plans.
Okay. Mr. Heidig, what are your thoughts?
I've said my piece for weeks, I'm ready to vote on it right now.
Okay. My worry is that if we were to vote on it this evening, especially with the emergency wording, I fear it would not pass as is. I'm also comfortable with voting on it this evening, however, I do want to add the amendment to include wording, just stating this would go into effect following an agreement with the foundation for the total funding of the project, so that we know that there will be a project. I feel like that's a good compromise.
My only concern is, we have the one for this building, correct?
Yes.
Why did we, why didn't we wait on that? Until it was all funded? We can't do anything with those schematics unless we're not in here, but we had no problem passing it then.
Ms. Gerhart?
Mr. Heidig, do you know when those were done?
I'd have to look, but when did, when was that passed? It was last year, wasn't it? Mr. Mayor?
And this is the first building that has to be started on anyway, so having those done?
That has to be started before this building.
Oh, that's true.
They can't do any of that as long as we're here.
I was just wondering, maybe those plans were done before they had the other building, to know what they were planning.
We had possession of the other building, correct, Mayor, before we had the schematics for this one?
I mean, I'd hate to give you an incorrect answer, I'd have to check the exact timeline. We've been working on this since two thousand and twelve, so, there's been a lot of steps in this process.
So that might be why you didn't have it for the first merit, they didn't own it yet?
Pretty sure we did, pretty quickly on that.
Prior to purchasing it outright, we did pay to kind of, it came off then to the purchase price, but kind of lock it up so the owner couldn't sell it to anyone else.
Options?
Got an option, purchase option. So we were doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work at that point, so. It may have happened during that time period, and I don't recall the exact times. We had it locked up for quite a while, that purchase option.
I appreciate your compromise, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. Like I said, Mr. Heidig, I, I want this to pass. It's needed, but I do also understand where other council members are coming from. I'm also feeling the same way, like I had stated previous weeks, I do feel like it is a little bit of the cart before the horse. We have schematic designs for a justice center that's collecting dust somewhere that never came to fruition. So I just, I know that this is money from the foundation, but if for some reason, we can't come to an agreement to fund the total project, I fear that it would be a hundred thousand dollars wasted, and it being the foundation's money, they could use that for something else.
Say point of order, it would be four thousand, two hundred dollars wasted. That wasn't our hundred thousand.
Right, but I'm just saying, come, like, in regards to the foundation's money, I think, out of respect for them, and Mr. Dodson said himself that it wouldn't hurt to wait until there is an agreement between the city and the foundation, so I also took that into consideration.
Thank you, Chair Simpson. Thank you, Chair Simpson, I'm on the committee, I'll just speak here. Last week, Mr. Dodson said that if this deal did not go through, there is no other funding alternatives for this period, none. I get that this money is from the foundation, but it'd be wasteful spending, in my opinion. If we got it, spent it, and then have the full project in hand, because then, again, we'd be sitting on a project for a hundred thousand dollars. It is not the city's money directly, but it is, could have went towards school programs or something else, right? However, I think the compromise that you've come up with, I'd like to see this get out, get done, voted on, passed, so we can move forward, because this is an important project. So I like the compromise that has been.
Yes.
I'm gonna say what I said last week. I think you should vote on it. I think you gotta have the schematics. They had to get rid of the money, we already got the money. The text cash, so there's no money to get, we already have. So there's nothing even to talk about, you got the money. So all you have to do is do what you have to do with it.
Mr. Flaker, if we don't utilize those funds for this specifically, what happens to the money?
Well, I mean, as the mayor alluded to, the foundation asks that the money be spent in a year. I'm gonna allude to what Councilman Easterling said last week. The schematic drawings are needed regardless of this project. So if the foundation goes and votes and doesn't approve the city's request, then how you guys would pass it, what you guys are proposing, the money then would go back to the foundation at that point in time. I'm also gonna make, use a comment that was used from the gallery last week. Why, yes, you guys will pass this and it could go, pass the contract, but if the foundation says no, what happens if the foundation says two years from now? Hey, you know that Justice Center Administration Building you guys are talking about? And we would be like, yeah, we know. Well, we came up with money that we're able to do, help you guys fund this at this point in time. What happens if they take that hundred thousand dollars off the table? Now the city's on the hook for a hundred thousand dollars, more than what we're already on the hook for, I mean, now we're on the hook for about five thousand. But not only that, costs go up. So what's to say the schematic drawings two years from now goes up to a hundred and fifty thousand? Now the city's on the hook for a hundred and fifty thousand versus five thousand. So, yeah, what happens to the money if it doesn't pass? Money essentially goes back to the foundation after a year, depending on how everything plays out. I mean, we're playing games of what-ifs here. What if the foundation passes it? Depending on how we pass stuff here, so. I mean, you guys want my opinion? My opinion? I would have to say it was, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the foundation, but with them approaching us, saying, hey, we have a hundred thousand dollars, I think that is a good indication of potentially the way they're leaning in this. I don't think, I think if it was still, like I said, this is all my opinion. If it was still up in the air, I don't think they would have came forth and said, hey, we have an extra hundred thousand dollars, do you guys need it for your Justice Center project? Without a good feeling about it, so. To answer your question, if we don't use it, it eventually goes back to the foundation, especially if they, if they pull it back or something, so.
Mr. Harris?
I got a question regarding, you said like, say the foundation comes back in two years and says, hey, we have the funding. Would those schematic designs need updated? I mean, that would cost more money too?
I mean, they would probably need updated, depending on how departments' needs change. I mean, a department could go through organizational changes that could affect how the drawings go. Needs in the city could change, so maybe the flow of something may not work any longer. But I wouldn't, why, yes, there's still gonna be probably additional costs at that time. I don't think it would be as much, because it's probably smaller tweaks. Now, I'm not an engineer or anything. Probably Mr. Tiadecki can speak better than I can on it. I deal with numbers and dollars, so. I'm not gonna be an, pretend to be an engineer and architect, but, I mean, for the most part, a lot of the heavy, heavy legwork is out of the way at that point in time. So, I mean, going back to my remark, why, yes, maybe the cost goes up, maybe we don't have an additional funding source, and we're on the hook for a hundred and fifty thousand, even if we're on the hook for, say, thirty thousand to update those schematic drawings, the city's still only paying thirty-five thousand compared to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Mr. Easterling?
My comments are gonna be on both sides of the fence, because I'm right in the middle. The first thing, too, if you, if we don't do something, like I said, put the cart in front of the horse, there's even the stuff in my committee as far as tearing down buildings, there's no point in tearing down one building if we're not doing another. So I got stuff, you know, that we have that we have, which is part of what has to be done. The other side of the fence is, if we sit on this building for two, three years without doing anything, the masonry repairs are gonna be worse, the roofing repairs are gonna be worse, the heating repairs, it's all gonna escalate, because it's, it's gonna sit down there with minimal heat, minimal whatever, just to maintain a dry building. So the repairs will probably go up. I would say, two, three years down the road, that wouldn't even include if we had ADA changes, or, you know, utility code changes, who knows? That's just, I'm not pushing either way, I'm just, that's just something that hasn't been brought up, is what would the cost if the building sat empty for five years? On top of, for even three years, for two years, given the operating cost of just maintaining the building over the next two years, and the building is probably, it's probably got a mortgage or, you know, something, we've got to know, it's pretty, we still have, our buildings.
Yeah.
Taxes, we maintain it. We have that out of pocket every month regardless. So I don't know what that is, but if it's two thousand bucks, that's fifty thousand dollars in two years, that's half of what we're arguing about, or disagreeing about right now. The nice thing is, same with mine, is we still got time to change it if you do the wording. You know, we still got more.
That wouldn't be the case this evening, it would be voted on this evening. We would change the wording, it would be amended on the floor. Mr. Tiadecki?
As much as I would love to see this pass tonight and progress forward, I'm with what Jason said last week, we're four to six weeks away. To have a hundred percent blessing of everybody, knowing for a fact the foundation is making the project whole, that four to six week, I, that's not gonna hurt the project. What would hurt the project is saying no, and not being able to, in four to six weeks or more, start that process, so. I, I really believe that forward process of the schematic design should move forward, and if it takes delaying it four weeks for everybody's blessing, truly, that is in the best interest of the city to use that money and move that forward, you know, at your comfort and soon as possible time, so. I don't think the wording change to put the contingency on it to get the project whole will hurt the overall picture of the entire process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I say we go with the dendum wording.
The amendment?
Amendment.
So, to be clear, that would just add, following an agreement with the Barberton Community Foundation regarding the funding of the total project. So not what is currently being presented to them, because if they come back and say, but we can't do that, but we can do this. If we can make it work, and we have a project, then this is a go. Mr. Heidig?
Speaking of doomsday scenarios, when somebody brought up if it's two or three years before they have the funding, if they have a contingency on this money that has to be returned in a year, and we put a rider on there not until the whole project's funded, then we're giving it back if they don't pass it this year. And like Director Flaker said, now we're back on the hook for the whole cost. That's why I worry about that kind of poison language on there, because if they vote to delay it one year, we're giving that money back, and we're stuck.
Ms. Gerhart?
Since it's a lot of scenarios, they could also give us the hundred thousand again for plans.
What?
It's, it's a circular opinion right now, so that's mine.
Thank you, Chair. As President, I want each one of the council members to look around this room. And you know where people fall. Take to heart what Mr. Tiadecki just said. He'd rather see this come out amended than fail. So just keep that in mind.
Yep.
Yep. So I am going to just, I want to be clear.
Mr. President.
To enter into contract, Hosenstopp Architects and ordinance authorizing the mayor or is designated to enter into contract with Hosenstopp Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barburton and the cost not to exceed $104,200, contingent on an agreement with the Barburton Community Foundation's vote on funding this project and declaring an emergency.
Now, before you read that, we'll amend it on the floor. So just keep that in.
But that's, that's what.
Well, we won't know until it passes on the floor for the amendment, but that's the gist of it.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll cover it down on the amendment just to make sure that it's, we're 100% clear on the floor.
Okay, moving on. We also have some appointments this evening for the Charter Review Commission. And I have done, you know, some more thinking about this. And, you know, we talked a lot about political parties last time. And, and looking at this list of candidates, I guess you could say, for the commission, and looking at Barburton as a whole, I'm wondering if maybe the residents would be better represented if it fell into line with what our demographic is. And by that, I mean, we have a lot of nonpartisan voters here in Barburton. And I would like to see at least one, if not two more, nonpartisan members on the commission. So I'm not sure how you guys feel about that, but just compared to our residents, I think, you know, if we could match it up a little bit better, if possible, based on the applications received, that's just a thought that I had. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If we feel that one person on this list doesn't work, maybe we ask that the entire list goes back and then a new list is presented. It doesn't need to be all new people, but just a group of people come back.
Yeah. I could definitely agree to that, rather than singling out individuals. I think that's a great idea. Ms. Gerhart.
Another thing I noticed once we saw everyone else who had applied for this, I feel like we've talked for a year now, and you guys have probably talked for longer, about getting like the fresh faces at the table and stuff like that. So if there was ability to bring some people. Nice to, just so they're not deterred from volunteering to do stuff again.
Are you suggesting that we open up the applications again for this?
Well, even a lot of the applicants we had received were new to volunteering for things. It seemed like I hadn't seen their names before.
Mayor, are we, are we able to still accept applications for this?
I mean, you're on the time clock now. The charter, and the charter specifically, I realize the demographics of the city, but the charter specifically talks about no more than four from one party or the other.
Sure.
So I don't know how that weighs into your little comments. But you can always accept more applications, but you're on the time frame now.
Okay. Well, I agree that obviously this is very important and I'm fine with holding a special meeting if needed to get the right people in place and to make it more coherent with the, with the city.
Thank you, Chair. While I love special meetings coming in on a special day. Today's the 10th. If, if this goes forward, the mayor needs, these appointments need to be made before the last day of February. Meaning the last day that we're in this building is the 24th in our meetings. So that means if this is the case, we need to have that list approved next week to go out on the legislative meeting on the 24th. There's no if, ands, or buts, or we will have special meeting in between the 24th and the 28th.
Mr. President.
Mr. Heidig.
It would just be a suspension of not called for the Committee of the Holsons Finance meets every week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's irrelevant.
But we typically.
It's unnecessary.
There would be no suspension, you would just call them out. You have by next week, or we can suspend the rules, not called for, but that we're kind of going out of our way. But, yeah, that is an option. It's not the way, but a way, but it's, it's an option that we can do. But just know that we are on a time crunch. Needs to be done before the end of February. So if it's not done by the 24th, we have no choice but then to call a special.
Okay. We can do it. All right. Is there any miscellaneous for finance and personnel? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
You want to make that motion?
Thank you, in a second. We adjourned at 6:54.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings this evening. I'm going to take five minutes and then come back. We'll start at 7:00 PM.
Heavily relying on these notes now. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If you can share your cellphones are off or on silent. And councilmembers, ensure your microphones are turned on. Got it. All right, today's February 10th, 2025. This is a regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Mrs. Hager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, let us always keep in our hearts that we are here to serve. Guide us in what our answers are and what our decisions are. Please keep our first responders and our military and all in your prayers. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
President.
Present.
Mr. Hyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Easterling.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
All right. Now, we're gonna move into approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the special legislative meeting held on Monday, January 21st, 2025, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the approval of the minutes from the special legislative meeting from Monday, January 21st, 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Griffin. Yes, thank you. Mr. Griffin?
I second.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mr. Griffin to approve the minutes of the special legislative meeting held on Monday, January 21st, 2025, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are adopted. Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, January 27th, 2025, as presented. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting from Monday, January 27th, 2025.
Thank you. And now, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Hyatt's motion to approve the minutes from Monday, January 27th, 2025, as presented.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, January 27th, 2025, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are adopted. Petitions and claims?
There are none.
Matters requested?
They've all been dismissed.
Thank you. Citizens addressing council? There were none. So we'll move into first reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 17-2025, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Enter into contract Law Department Defender's Office of Summit County. An ordinance authorizing the law director to enter into a one-year contract with the legal defender's office of Summit County to provide legal representation to indigent persons in the amount of $230 per case and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 17-2025.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to adopt ordinance number 17-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 18-2025, presented by Ms. Gerhardt. Title: Barberton Public Ordinance Update. An ordinance to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances to provide for the adoption of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, to repeal ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, and to declare an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Beck is absent. Co-chair, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Gerhardt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 18-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to adopt ordinance number 18-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Thank you. Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 20-2025, presented by Mr. Harris. Title: Amending Ordinance Number 69-2024. Enter into contract Vasu... Sorry. One more? I skipped 19. I'm sorry.
That's a very, very, very tiny test.
Okay, we're gonna do the skip. Ordinance number 19-2025, presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title: Authorized Payment Everbridge. An ordinance authorizing the director of finance to pay the invoice to Everbridge Incorporated in the amount of $5,562.94 for the payment of the annual mixwell contract and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 19-2025.
Thank you. And Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Hyatt to adopt ordinance number 19-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Thank you. Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 20-2025, presented by Mr. Harris. Title: Amending Ordinance Number 69-2024. Enter into contract Vasu Communications Incorporated. An ordinance amending ordinance number 69-2024. Enter into contract Vasu Communications Incorporated to reflect the new total amount of $508,932.25 for the purchase of a new radio system and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mr. Easterling.
I second Mr. Harris's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mr. Easterling to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 20-2025.
Thank you. And Mr. Easterling.
I second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mr. Easterling to adopt ordinance number 20-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 21-2025, presented by Mr. Hyatt. Title: Enter into contract T&amp;M Associates. An ordinance authorizing the city of Barberton to enter into contract with T&amp;M Associates to carry out the recently awarded $500,000 U.S. EPA Assessment Bronfield Grant and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Hyatt's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 21-2025.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Hyatt's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 21-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
This ends the first reading.
Second reading of ordinances and resolutions. Third reading of ordinances and resolution.
Ordinance number 2-2025, presented by Ms. Gerhardt and Mrs. Thompson. Title: Enter into contract Hasenstopp Architects. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into contract with Hasenstopp Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barberton, and the cost not to exceed $104,200, and declaring an emergency. The first reading of this was on January 13th, 2025. The second reading was on January 27th, 2025. This is the third and final reading.
Thank you. It's my understanding that there would like to be a motion on the floor for amendment. So, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance, to add wording that this would be following in agreement with the Barberton Community Foundation regarding the funding of the total
Is that what you have marked down on your reading?
Contingent upon an agreement with the Barberton Community Foundation's vote on funding this project is what I have. Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there a second for that amendment?
I would second that.
Ms. Gerhardt? All right. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to amend this piece of legislation as presented. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck is absent. Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
All right. Mo-
Do you have a comment from Emily if you want? Mrs. Beck, if you want to.
She's... No, not right now. We can... Well, let me just say this. The motion for the amendment carries, requires five. We have six. Now, I will make a motion to adopt, and then we will read her comment after that. So, motion to adopt. This is kind of backwards, but we'll do Mrs. Thompson for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 2-2025, as amended this evening.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Thompson's motion on amending.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to adopt ordinance number 2-2025, as amended this evening on the floor. Are there any remarks from the body? Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I reluctantly voted for the amendment just to see this pass. However, I still think that could be a poisonous pill for us to swallow. But I'm going off of our engineers' advice, our finance director's advice, that anything is better than nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Noted. Is there anything else from the body? Clerk, can you read the comment from Councilwoman Beck?
Mrs. Beck said that the Barberton Community Foundation is not for funding the project. Shouldn't we amend to say pending adequate funding from the foundation to complete the project? It's kind of horse horsing that?
Yeah.
It does say agreement with the foundation. Yeah.
The intent of the amendment was to address just that. All right. I'll ask one more time. Are there any comments from the body? All righty. No. Since this does have emergency wording on it, and we have seven members, five is required. So, clerk, can you call the motion on adoption?
I have to read it again.
As amended.
Ordinance number 2-2-
Wait. Yes. I'm sorry. You have to read it, then I have to make a motion. Go ahead.
Ordinance number 2-2025, presented by Ms. Gerhardt and Mrs. Thompson. Title: Enter into contract Hasenstopp Architects. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into contract with Hasenstopp Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barberton, and the cost not to exceed $104,200, and contingent on an agreement with the community... The Barberton Community Foundation vote on their fun... On funding for this project and declaring an emergency. This wording was amended by a motion of Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Gerhardt, and agreed upon and voted on tonight with the majority voting to accept this amendment for vote.
Thank you. Okay. It's been a roundabout day today. Now, we're gonna do another motion to adopt.
We don't do this often.
Another motion to adopt. Go ahead. Motion to adopt. We'll do Ms. Gerhardt.
Are we adopting or suspending?
Adopting.
Adopting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 2-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Ms. Gerhardt's motion on adoption.
A motion was made by Ms. Gerhardt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to adopt ordinance number 2-2025, as amended on the floor this evening. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
All right. We have six yea, one no. Required vote is five, so motion for adoption carries.
This ends the third reading.
Thank you.
To the Barberton Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Terry Avant. His six-year term starting immediately and ending on December 31st, 2023.
All right. Motion to appoint. Mrs. Thompson.
Mr. Hyatt.
Oh, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the appointment of Mr. Terry Avant to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. And now, Mrs. Thompson.
Oh, yep. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Hyatt and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to appoint Mr. Terry Avant to a six-year term starting immediately and ending December 31st, 2030, to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right. There were six yea, one nay. The minimum's met. So the motion for Mr. Avant carries. All right. And we're gonna move over to the appointments for the Charter Review Commission. I will take this off your hands on this one. So... So, all right. Seeing that there's a new list, or we're asking for a new list, a complete new list, and these members are already on the agenda for today, I'd ask that these be voted in a block this evening. So, is there a motion to appoint the Charter Review Commission members as mentioned on our sheet? I'll ask one more time. Is there a motion to appoint the Charter Review Commission as marked on the agenda? All right. Seeing that there's no motion, these will just fall off and go back into the list of candidates that will be presented to us hopefully here shortly. Mislenious and unfinished business. All right. Wow. All right. Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Beck from tonight's meeting? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse Counselor Beck from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion to excuse Mrs. Beck this evening.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to excuse Mrs. Beck from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Mrs. Beck is excused. One note to mention that on the seventeenth, next week, is President's Day, so council, the committee of the whole, will be on the eighteenth, Tuesday. Same time, same place. Is there any communication from the body? Department heads? Mrs. Te... Mr. Teadecky? Sorry.
I spoke a few weeks ago about Omni Fiber and told you I'd give you, try and give you every week updates. They did start today. They had utilities marked late last week. They started work today. And we're trying to get, as we get their input from them to... We're sharing that with Vanessa and Ashley to kind of get that out on social media and distribute the information we receive. So, any questions on that, feel free to reach out directly to me and I'll see if I can help answer questions. We are closely working with them to track their progress and make sure the restoration is in line with our standards.
Thank you, Mr. Teadecky. Anything else from any other department heads? I don't have anything else, so we'll come up with a communication from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Change for change this month is for Barbados Youth Wrestling. It'll be at the pre-game tavern. We did... We are changing the date because the original date fell on the same date as the Esther Ryan Shoe Fund Spaghetti Dinner, so we're going to be changing that. In terms of the city budget, we want to start having department meetings next week, kind of presentations next week, but I want to go over a few of the highlights in this week's, or this year's budget, excuse me. First, demolitions. Total of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for demolitions. That includes around twenty thousand dollars for emergencies. So, that kind of is held off unless there's an emerg... for emergencies. That does have a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the rental registration to project impact, so that can... Fifty grand minimum can be used on rentals. Police, two new police cruisers. As I reported the other week, we've had two police cruisers recently in service, so this puts us in a good spot moving forward. So, the fleet's doing well. Street department, a new paver. That's about a hundred thousand dollars. It's not a paver that you see with some of the construction companies that we work with, but you know, when we passed issue eight, about two million dollars a year was getting the job done. If you do the math, which I have, even if you went up a full percent, you wouldn't have enough to play catch-up. The roads were ignored for so long that the cost of asphalt and the concrete and full-depth paving and everything else that goes along with it in certain spots, you never catch up. So, we've been at that quarter percent. It's about two million dollars. We've taken advantage of interest rates when they're really low, but we know that it's time to do some spot repairs internally. Now, we can't do what the big construction companies do or move as quickly as them, but it's time to buy a paver and do some spot repairs throughout the city. So, that's in there. A trailer for the skid steer, which helps us with some of our spot repairs as well. A concrete thumper for the skid steer and attachment to break up concrete. So, whether that's sidewalks, concrete streets, curb, storm inlets, things of that nature. We are making some roof repairs at the street department as well, and it's not in this year's budget, but we're looking at ordering a five-ton dump truck. That'll be a lease purchase, and that'll hit next year's budget, but put the order in this year. Utilities. Mr. Shreve went over entering into contract with Enterprise for some pickup trucks. That'll flow through the system starting there. Parks department, new van. We have the one kind of RV that was purchased with some ARPA funds, but if you recall, there's some black passenger vans that are fairly old and don't meet today's standards and safety, so we want to kind of scrap those and buy a new van for transporting kids and seniors. Looking at upgrades and renovating the basketball court at Waltz Park and looking at some other things throughout the city as well with our parks. Fire department, we want to get in and clean the bay of Fire Station One. A lot of exhaust fumes, cancer-causing agents. We want to get in there and power wash that and get that cleaned up. You may notice, and one of the downfalls, Jeremy left, of this year's budget that we discussed earlier was no page numbers on the printed forms. So, it's going to be a little difficult to go through. So, try to make tabs where you're at with departments and things of that nature, so it's a little easier to skip around. But you may see a fund called Forest City. Forest City owned property in the development up at the older section of New Haven. They went bankrupt. We filed a lawsuit. We settled on about a hundred thousand dollars to be put in a separate fund to be used in that development only. So, we are budgeting the full amount, just under twenty thousand dollars for some road resurfacing in that area. So, we've used that money for new signs, for new curbs, and things of that nature over the years, but this will deplete that fund and go for some road resurfacing in that area. Again, it has to be used in that area. Animal control. We've had an agreement with Summit County with animal control. We want to step that up, so about five thousand dollars, and so we're working with an organization for... They would do spay neutering of cats. We have a big issue with feral cats or cats at large, if you will, so we want to make sure that they're treated humanely in a spay neutering program. TNR is very useful. We've had this before. We've talked about this, so that's in the budget as well. Lot of things through planning. Our planning department... Most cities have a planning department that deals with zoning, and they have a separate economic development department. We have a planning department that does signage, zoning, planning, short-term, long-term, economic development, all of that. So, a lot of things flow through the planning department. But as you know, we've had... We introduced parklets last year and had a great success, a lot of great feedback. Thank you to Mr. Polichek and Mr. Teadecky for physically putting those together last year, spending a lot of hours off the clock. Want to do two more on Second Street. So, I know we're working with Main Street. We're working with Home Depot to try to get supplies. So, looking at that, council's been involved and passed recently contracts for Festoon Lightning on Second Street. So, that's a project that we're working on. Sidewalks, we've received about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from former Senator Sherrod Brown's office for sidewalks, so that's moving forward. Still working on getting closer and closer to the development code, so that's coming up soon. And then there's other plans that we're working on throughout the year or two. So, whether that's starting the master plan, which follows the development code, arts and culture plan, design guidelines, things like that. And then human resources is always keeping active lists for various positions throughout the city. So, there's always people retiring and moving up and down throughout the kind of the chain of command through, whether it's police, fire, ASME, clerk, equipment operator, things of that nature. So, those are some of the highlights I wanted to share with you guys as you look through the budget. And we'll start those hearings next week. Any questions? Real quick on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Oh, do you know who's going to be presenting next week?
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll try to get that out as soon as possible. Try to set that up.
Okay. Thank you.
What if we all need this page one and the back of it two, and we numbered our books? Would that help?
Yeah.
Because then if we all numbered it and you did two, we could say page fifty-four.
Assuming everyone printed it double-sided. Yes.
Yeah. So, go to the back, and that's two, and then that's three.
So, and we may have it... We may be able to have it electronically, so it might be a little easier if we can do a search by word or something.
Okay. I didn't know if that would help because you mentioned the page numbers.
I'm not sure how many department heads printed it out.
That's true.
So, we may have it electronically.
Okay. Never mind. I was trying to problem solve that.
Well, if, you know, we'll have a list of four or five departments. We'll know. We'll have some time to kind of earmark where that's at.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget? Okay. The state budget has been sent for discussion as well. Some of the highlights that kind of could pertain to the city of Barbados, historic tax, rehab tax credit, looking at jumping that from sixty million to a hundred and twenty million, and a new credit for owner-occupied historic homes. So, you think around Lake Anna, think of a lot of our housing stock throughout town. Eight million for local government cybersecurity. And a lot of these, they haven't sent out the details yet. So, more funding for local governments and libraries. In what form? I'm not sure. Thousand-dollar child tax credit, age six and under, funded by higher tobacco taxes. So, that would... We've got a lot of young families in town, so that could be very, very helpful and useful. Doubling the tax on sports gaming to forty percent, which would fund stadiums and cut student sports fees throughout the state. So, their kind of process is that they'll start hearings this week on that, and that'll run through April. Senate will have to make changes by the end of June or by June, and then the final budget should be passed by the end of June, the thirtieth. So, a lot of work to be done in Columbus. We're keeping tabs on Columbus and what's going on there, and so the federal level and what's going on there and how that kind of trickles down to us as we do every year. So, last week, I presented in front of the Rotary Club. Today, I met with AMATS this morning, and we have a policy meeting later this week. We have several business visits this week. So, a very busy, busy week here as we go into President's Day next Monday, and as the council president said, we'll meet next Tuesday here. So, any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. With nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Heidick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidick's motion to adjourn.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidick and seconded by Mrs. Thompson. That we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Didn't think so. This meeting is adjourned at seven...